Good morning, colleagues. I understand there are eighteen delegations in the room and I would like to begin. We're ten minutes past the hour to start and if you don't mind, we will get on with the business of beginning this first meeting of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development for 2020. I would like to start by expressing my sincere appreciation to my dear friend and colleague, Ambassador Rita Clavard, the CEO of Permit Representative Guatemala for her effective leadership as Chair of the Council from July to December 2019, which has contributed to the advancement of the Hemisphere Development Agenda. I am pleased to say that we will have specially invited guests today, Dr Gary Jackson by video conference, he is the Executive Director of the Caribbean Centre for Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency, Mr Wells Griffith of the United States International Finance Corporation, and Ms Neha Mukhi of the World Bank. I thank them for accepting our invitation to take part in today's deliberations. I now submit for your consideration the Draft Order of Business document CD/OD-98/20 Corregendum I. If there are no objections, the Draft Order of Business is approved. Colleagues, I had made some remarks when I formally assumed the chairmanship of this council a couple of weeks ago, but if you will forgive me, I would like to refer to them again at the risk of repeating myself. As we begin the six-month tenure of Guyana's chairmanship of the council, I pledge to you my personal commitment and that of my delegation to the promotion of the work of CD. We are mindful that integral development is at the core of the Hemisphere Agenda and is a common and joint responsibility of all member states. As I mentioned at the handover ceremony, this chairmanship comes at an important juncture in the history of my country. On February 23rd, 2020, we will celebrate fifty years as a republic and with a country on the verge of a massive economic and social transformation, this is a time of national reflection on the renewal of efforts to build a more prosperous and equitable country. Our President, His Excellency David Granger, has declared that this year marks the beginning of a decade of development, which will accelerate the country's four transformative processes: the green state, the digital state, the petroleum state, and an education nation. I am pleased to affirm that even as Guyana has become a petroleum-producing nation, we have also embarked on the path towards sustainable development articulated in the Green State Development Strategy Vision 2040. This twenty-year national development policy for a green Guyana is centred on principles of a green economy defined by low-carbon and resilient development through the efficient use of resources, and it establishes a roadmap for the sustainable exploitation of our natural resources, the creation of a diversified economic base, continued focus on our traditional strength agriculture, and the protection and proper management of the environment. Our proposed priority themes therefore are intended to build on the work of CD during the previous semester and will focus on quality and equitable education for the Americas, inclusive and competitive economies, sustainable development and renewable energy for the transformation of the Americas, bridging the technological gap through ICT, and resilience to natural disasters and climate-smart solutions to combat climate change in the Hemisphere, which I understand will be closely related to the central theme being proposed by the Bahamas for the next General Assembly. We believe that these themes are reflective of the interests of all member states, in particular the small states of the Caribbean and Central America. Colleagues, I believe that we have an excellent opportunity to advance the work of CD through dialogue and consensus building for the benefit of all member states. I wish to assure you that during Guyana's chairmanship, a collaborative approach will be taken to address the challenges and opportunities before us. Building on the methodology adopted during the previous semester for CD meetings, we will continue to promote the active participation of delegations in the deliberations. The sessions will begin with our member states delivering presentations that share salient information on the challenges and opportunities they have experienced with the subject matter of the meeting. Our guest experts will share successful regional and international experiences that address these challenges and opportunities and identify common points to address the gaps. Based on the deliberations, CD will propose specific actions that the secretariat and member states could make or implement and might serve as inputs for the CD omnibus draft resolution to the General Assembly. My delegation and I look forward to working with you all, with Executive Secretary Kim Osborne and her team, and with the General Secretariat as a whole, over the next six months, on issues that profoundly affect the lives of the people of the Americas in fulfillment of their aspirations for inclusive and sustainable economic, social, and human development. I thank you for your kind attention. And we will now move on to item three, panel discussion on promoting resilient and sustainable infrastructure in the Americas, the role of ECPA. We will start these deliberations on the role of ECPA in promoting resilient and sustainable infrastructure in the Americas. As we are aware, the major challenges in the development of the Americas spring from the social, economic, and environmental vulnerability of the vast majority of countries in the region to a variety of internal and external shocks, including exposure to energy price shocks which affect competitiveness. From a perspective of competitiveness building and foreign exchange conservation, the case for shifting resilient energy infrastructure is persuasive. The challenge, however, is to ensure that this transition does not undermine energy security. While renewable resources might provide for redundancy of energy grids and decentralised systems, new challenges to building the resilience of the source distribution lines and energy storage systems arise. In that context, the Energy and Climate Partnership of the Americas provides a setting for countries in the Western Hemisphere to exchange ideas and forge solutions to help them achieve a more sustainable energy future. While their specific policies and strategies may vary, all the countries participating in ECPA share key goals such as deploying renewable energy projects, using cleaner fossil fuels, maximising energy efficiency, improving energy integration, and building infrastructure that is resilient to disruptive threats that can affect the quality of energy services delivered to the people, in sync with the 2030 Sustainable Development Agenda adopted by the United Nations in 2015. Since its beginning more than a decade ago, ECPA has operated as a simple, flexible mechanism designed to encourage cooperation and address evolving needs and priorities, providing a platform for growth and prosperity. It brings together governments, the private sector, and other stakeholders to implement initiatives and explore solutions to the challenges every country faces to provide modern energy for all. The purpose of this CD meeting is to facilitate deliberation on strategies that may be pursued through ECPA, to build enabling environments for private sector investment in resilient energy infrastructure in the Americas, to connect the private sector to opportunities in the region to promote energy matrix diversification, energy security, and sustainability, and to exchange best practices to meet energy project requirements. It is now my pleasure to invite the delegation of Jamaica to initiate the deliberations. Mr Williams, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, Executive Secretary Kim Osborne, Director Cletus Springer, ambassadors, alternate representatives, distinguished guests, good morning. I take this opportunity to thank the secretariat, particularly the Department for Sustainable Development, for organising this very important meeting, and for bringing together this panel to engage in a dialogue, which I'm sure will enrich our knowledge on a topic that is indeed quite relevant, and bearing in mind also possible next steps to be taken by the Energy and Climate Partnership of the Americas, known popularly by its acronym, ECPA, as we all seek to move towards a future buttressed by energy security and sustainability. As a small developing island, Jamaica is faced with many of the challenges associated with the peculiarities of small economies. Among the main threats faced by Jamaica and indeed other small island developing states is the extent to which we can, under free market conditions, produce goods and services competitively in the global marketplace. The high cost of energy, a key output in the production process, remains a major stumbling block to our competitiveness and growth. As a consequence of this reality, the government of Jamaica has taken a proactive stance, and as Prime Minister Andrew Olness declared during his presentation to this August Permanent Council in November 2018, here I quote, "Jamaica will not wait on the world to save us, and we also recognise that the world will not wait for us. We are taking our destiny in our own hands, as ultimately, I believe our economic independence will secure our resilience." End of quote. And so, our main aim is to achieve a robust and resilient energy mix, resistant to the vagaries of the global economic architecture and the negative effects of climate change. In this context, the ECPA is a very important forum and flexible mechanism for us, as we explore possibilities which can minimise, if not eliminate, our dependence on fossil fuel as our main energy source, and moving towards energy security through the increased use of renewable energy, particularly wind and solar energy. The upcoming ministerial meeting, which Jamaica has the pleasure of hosting in Montego Bay in a few weeks' time, is therefore a clear demonstration of the government's commitment to attaining energy security and achieving Jamaica's target of fifty per cent electricity to be generated by renewables by the year 2030. In this, the eleventh anniversary of its establishment, the ECPA remains as relevant today as it was in its inception in April 2009, a pragmatic forum where countries in the Western Hemisphere exchange ideas and forge solutions aimed at achieving a sustainable energy future. The government of Jamaica is under no illusion and is keenly aware that transitioning towards resilient and sustainable infrastructure will demand innovative thinking while incorporating strategic business models. It will also require the diversification of a talent pool from which to develop new and innovative ideas, not only within the Jamaican and Caribbean context, but also the entire Western Hemisphere. And so, Mr Chairman, the fourth ECPA ministerial meeting in Jamaica will focus on a wide range of topics, including but not limited to: energy efficiency, resilient energy infrastructure planning, electric mobility, financing mechanisms to derisk energy transition, the use of natural gas and LNG, and strategies for enhanced private sector engagement. My delegation looks forward to today's deliberations, which should provide valuable insights into the role of ECPA in promoting resilient and sustainable infrastructure. Mr Chairman, kindly permit me to use this opportunity to remind the delegation that the fourth ECPA ministerial meeting will be held from the 27th to 28th February 2020 in Montego Bay, to which ministers of energy throughout the hemisphere have been invited. We look forward to wide representation, active participation, and frank and open discussions as we work together towards a resilient and sustainable future through workable solutions engaged by the Energy and Climate Partnership of the Americas. Finally, it would be remiss of me not to take this opportunity also to express our sincere appreciation to the Department of Sustainable Development, which has worked closely with our mission here in Washington DC and the authorities in Kingston in putting together the elements necessary for what is shaping up to be a productive ministerial meeting. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Jamaica for that presentation. Next on the agenda was supposed to be Dr Jackson coming via video conference, but I am advised that he will have to join later for technical reasons. I am therefore pleased to offer the floor to Mr Wells Griffith, the Managing Director and Senior Advisor to the CEO for Energy at the United States International Finance Corporation. Mr Griffith, you have the floor for your presentation. May I remind you that there is a maximum of ten minutes for presentations?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you Secretary Osborne and distinguished representatives to the OAS. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all about the new US International Development Finance Corporation, the DFC, which replaced and expanded the Overseas Private Investment Corporation, and discuss how the DFC can play an important role in promoting resilient and sustainable energy infrastructure in the Americas. I recently joined DFC about, well, it was OPEC at the time, two months ago, so I'm relatively new in this position, but previously I was at the National Security Council as Senior Director for International Energy and Environment, and previously at the US Department of Energy. I'm the energy guy. We have, my colleagues cover the region, but there's a lot of opportunity in the Americas to really catalyse investment in energy infrastructure, which is so very important. I'm going to give, as a new organisation, I'm going to give kind of an overview of where we are and how that relates to energy, and we can, I guess, take questions when we have the discussion as well. Before I start, just to kind of give a little background on how we became the DFC, the, well, actually, I'll step back, I'm sorry, I thought I skipped a slide, but obviously everyone knows energy is a currency for peace and prosperity in the world that underpins economic growth and global security and development. Access to affordable, reliable energy and resilient energy is central to economic development, poverty reduction, as well as global security. Every country has different energy realities and priorities. The US DFC's priority is to partner with the private sector to finance solutions to the most critical challenges facing the developing world today, including in the energy sector. Access to affordable, reliable, and secure energy remains a challenge for many countries, and we stand ready to participate in bankable energy projects where we are allowed to operate while at the same time promoting the cleanest and most efficient energy technologies, but we support all energy infrastructure. The launch of the new US International Development Finance Corporation, the DFC, marks one of the most significant advances to American development and foreign policy in a generation. The DFC was created through landmark bipartisan legislation, the Build Act, as policymakers recognise the world's emerging markets have a great need for investment and that private capital is essential to solving the significant challenges they face. The new DFC modernised, amplified, and expanded the mission of the existing Overseas Private Investment Corporation with many additional resources. Our cap has more than doubled from 29 billion to 60. We also have new tools, including Equity Authority, in addition to our traditional debt financing and political risk insurance. We now have the authority to make equity investments, a tool widely used in the development finance around the world. We also have the ability to participate in technical assistance and feasibility studies. We can provide targeted support to evaluate and advance potential projects in their early stages. This is a new tool that previously was not, that we did not have under OPEC. We also have new capabilities. We absorb USAID's Development Credit Authority, which provides partial credit guarantees to mobilise local financing in developing countries. We also have a greater focus on lower-income countries, which I'll talk about more, on how the restrictions on where we do and do not operate, and we've increased our inter-agency coordination to ensure that our work is aligned with US foreign policy objectives and priorities. So, who we are. The DFC is America's development bank. We partner with private sector, which is one of the requirements, to finance solutions to the most critical challenges facing the developing world. Investment in developing countries is growing much faster than traditional aid, as challenges facing the world today are too great for any government or non-profit to address alone. We work to mobilise private investment in poor and often fragile states, many in the emerging world, that lack access to basic needs, including clean water to drink, electricity to cook, study, or work, basic healthcare facilities, access to financial services, education and training. With our expanded financial tools, including our loans and political risk insurance, we help businesses invest in frontier markets where they cannot access enough private capital. Working side by side with private investors, we support projects that build critical infrastructure around the world, and these projects create jobs and opportunities in areas of great need. So, just, I'll do a quick run-through on our mission, vision, values. They really speak for themselves, but, you know, our mission is to invest with private sector partners to advance the interests of the American people through development in the emerging markets. We have a strong, our vision is a strong international markets based on transparent competition, rule of law, and individual freedom. And then our values, I think, speak for themselves as well, but it's unity, ingenuity, caring, grit, and service. Very straightforward. In addition to our values, our CEO and our leadership has created kind of a triple-lane model for investment around the world, balancing three key components: global development, we mobilise private sector investment to advance development in emerging economies; foreign policy, we also serve as a critical tool of American foreign policy, mobilising investment in regions of critical strategic importance, like the Americas and other regions around the world. At a time when some authoritarian states are advancing a form of development that has left many countries saddled with debt, DFC offers a strong alternative to development that embraces transparency, sovereignty, and rule of law to build strong economies. And these are very core values and important to the organisation, and we like to partner with countries that respect transparency, rule of law, and sovereignty, that are looking to create strong economies and opportunities for their citizens. The third is returns, so we are a government-backed bank. Our investments do generate returns from the American taxpayers, because we invest in projects rather than provide aid, we generate capital that we return to the US Treasury as well. So, next I want to kind of talk about kind of what we offer, our different product lines. So, equity financing, which I mentioned before, is relatively new, but we are now able to provide direct equity and also support in development funds, investment funds. We have political risk insurance as well, this is one of, this is one of OPEC's original products. The difference now is our cap has risen, I think we used to be around 250, 350 million. Now we have coverage up to 1 billion against losses due to currency and convertibility, government interference, and political violence, including terrorism. We also offer reinsurance to increase underwriting capacity for energy infrastructure and other projects. Also debt financing, direct loans and guarantees. Again, the difference is our cap is now around 1 billion per project, and which was previously a lower cap. Real quickly, where we work, and then I mentioned the technical development earlier. Where we work, we're around the world, you can see here, we have 6.3 billion in active projects in Latin America, we're looking to do more and expand there. We also have an app in the Apple iStore, I guess it's called, which lists out all of our projects across the board, also it's available on our website. Investment priorities, we're not just energy, that's what I cover, but just for everyone's awareness, we're also doing healthcare, critical infrastructure technology, and financing for small businesses and women entrepreneurs with our Two X initiative. Important part, project eligibility. We have a screening process, similar to many of the other MDBs and international finance institutions, but these are kind of the basic questions: will the project have private sector participation? That is a requirement, we cannot provide loans or guarantees or our product alliance directly to governments, we have to go in with private sector. Will my project uphold high social and environmental standards? We have our internal, we have an environmental and social impact analysis, largely connected to the IFC standards one, but that's one of the things. Will my project negatively impact US jobs? Are we open for, is DFC open in my country of interest? That's important, we are pinned to the World Bank country classifications. Our priority focus is on low, lower-middle, lower-middle income, and we can participate in upper-middle income as well, but we are precluded from working in high-income countries. And then this is our project lifecycle, it's more once we get into our internal review, but we start sourcing deals, so when private sector or governments are doing tenders, we start having initial discussions to provide the requirements to qualify for our participation. We pre-screen, then we have an application process online, we do our due diligence, we have approval with our board for any projects over 50 million dollars, which is generally energy projects, and they vote, they meet quarterly, it's comprised of US government, State Department, Treasury, DFC, our CEO, Commerce, and then we have private sector board members as well. And then, once we, the project closed and we're participating, we continue to monitor in our programme, in one of our offices, to ensure that it's on track. Kind of breeze through it, I think I'm done, our time is up, so that's perfect, this is just kind of our impact. We've done 3.5 gigawatts of power, we do all projects, energy projects, transmission, renewables. We have different requirements on some of our GHG limits, but we don't discriminate. The only thing we're precluded from currently is nuclear power, which is aligned with other MDBs, and then the rest is just kind of our general, our Two X programme, and the other regions we work in around the world. So, I think I, thank you very much again, thanks for letting, inviting me to have the opportunity to talk to you about our, the new DFC.
Thank you very much, Mr Griffith. I'm now pleased to offer the floor to Ms Neha Mukhi, the Senior Climate Change Specialist at the World Bank. Ms Mukhi, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr Chair, and Secretary Osborne, and esteemed colleagues in the room for giving me the opportunity to be here with you and share some of the work that the World Bank has been doing in the region, specifically in the energy sector. Of course, I just wanted to give a quick overview, as we know, World Bank is a global multilateral development bank, working across all the regions, focusing with the twin goals, with the mission of ending extreme poverty and boosting shared prosperity around the world. We have a very strong engagement and a history of engagement in Latin America and the Caribbean, and we're very proud to have been working with the countries on some very important, some very critical energy infrastructure projects. In my slides, I'm going to focus specifically on our energy engagement in the region and highlight some of the key priorities that were identified based on specific requests from countries that helped shape the programme, the energy programme that the bank, World Bank currently has in the region. So, a quick overview of where the challenges were identified in consultation and partnership with several of our country counterparts. Latin America and Caribbean is a very unique region with countries that have different scales of markets and different scales of the energy sector in itself, with a range of factors that influence, have influenced historically the growth of the energy sector and going forward, looking at the new and future of the energy sector, which is changing as we talk with respect to technology changes, with respect to urbanisation trends, energy security and trade becoming more and more important, and of course, financial constraints that, you know, impact investments in competing priorities along with the energy sector, and of course, underpinning importance of the macroeconomic and political economy that influence the priorities. And last but not the least, of course, climate change has had an influence on many of the choices of investments that are being made, and going forward will influence some of the critical new investment choices as well, both from a low-carbon development and a resilient infrastructure perspective. This is a quick snapshot of, based on the key priority areas and the challenges that were identified, this slide aims to quickly summarise our key pillars of engagement in the region, focusing on renewable energy, energy efficiency... key pillars of engagement in the region, focusing on renewable energy, energy efficiency, and energy access, which includes expansion of the transmission and distribution network, grid reliability, and strengthening of the overall system. The cross-cutting priorities embedded into these investment areas so far have been resilient energy infrastructure and also gender equality across all areas of engagement. In fact, the World Bank Group has a gender, global gender strategy, which goes from 2016 to 2023, that embeds gender equality across all our engagement areas. And in fact, in the Latin America and Caribbean region, we have a very focused program across all sectors of engagement, not just energy. Our specific modes of engagement where we work with the countries include policy support, dialogue on enabling environments to create investments. In some cases, we, in many cases, we work on direct energy infrastructure investments. In some of the advanced markets where private sector is already quite keen on investing, we come in with specific risk mitigation instruments to create a more attractive environment for private sector participation. And of course, in addition to these direct investments, we work with the countries on technical assistance and capacity building across all of these areas. This is a quick snapshot of our very recent engagements that cover a range of renewable energy, energy efficiency projects, transmission and distribution projects, energy access projects on rural electrification, a more advanced risk guarantee engagement in Argentina that led to very successful auctions, then geothermal risk mitigation project in Dominica, which was a very unique approach adopted for the specific country, the Caribbean, in the Caribbean region. And then a very specific grid modernization and rehabilitation project in Belize with a focus on strengthening the system to avoid some of huge losses that are usually seen in the aftermath of natural disasters and extreme weather events. And as a specific focus, I wanted to highlight, given the focus on the topic today on resilient and sustainable infrastructure, I wanted to highlight one of our regional initiatives in the Caribbean region, which integrates all of these elements together in a one-programmatic approach for the Eastern Caribbean region. And one of the reasons I'm highlighting this is because some of the challenges are similar, shared across the region, but also very unique, given the scale of the systems that we are dealing with. Of course, we know about the high electricity prices in the region, which are driven by imported fuel prices and complete reliance on that. And then the systems losses that have, you know, in fact, reduced the efficiency of delivery of the extreme, of the expensive electricity that is being generated. Overall, the energy matrices tend to be less diversified, and that leads to, in many cases, impacts on, that is also impacted by the existing regulations. While these are the challenges, but they also currently create opportunities for new ideas and investments, given that generation prices, energy prices from more domestic and renewable cleaner energy sources have been declining significantly. So we see this as an opportunity for the countries in the region to really impact their own fiscal spending on, in the sector, and overall sustainability of clean and renewable, and resilient infrastructure. So based on the challenges that were identified with, in partnership with the countries, the World Bank Energy Team came up with a proposed approach on a clean, resilient, and cost-effective energy infrastructure, which aims to help the countries diversify their power generation matrix, enhance resilience of their energy infrastructure and overall systems. And while it is, while we highlight here resilience to climate change, but it's also overall economic resilience to shocks associated with fuel supply, which has a huge impact currently on the economies. And overall promoting efficiency that would help save overall energy and reduce costs as well. This is a quick snapshot of the information that we gathered with our specific utilities and governments in the countries on how severe weather events and natural disasters have specifically impacted the energy sector, which further strengthened the case for resilient infrastructure and renewable infrastructure needs in many cases. A quick snapshot of how we're working in the region, a systematic way of taking stock off their current, taking stock off the vulnerabilities of their current infrastructure, looking at future opportunities for new investments based on this country's demands in terms of energy growth, and how to ensure that the country can invest in more sustainable, cleaner, and resilient infrastructure. So that's a comprehensive regional program that we've been working on. And that actually ties in very well with our engagement that we've been currently working on, in preparation for the ECA ministerial meeting with the government in Jamaica and our various development partners, in collaboration with development partners. And we're working to put together specific side events as part of the ministerial meeting on energy efficiency, renewable energy, and energy resilience. So that kind of covers the overall engagement right now. And finally, one of the requests that we received was on putting together a panel discussion on energy and gender, and that's what we'll be working on going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mukhi. I'm now pleased to invite Dr. Gary Jackson, Executive Director of the Caribbean Center for Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency, to join us via video conference from Barbados.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, distinguished guests and excellencies. All right, so I'm part of the Caribbean Center for Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency, CEC, otherwise called CEC. We are part of a global system and energy network across the world. So we are, we have the ICAW region, the Pacific region, Himalayas, Arabic region. So we were recently established after the sufficient ratification by our heads of government in CARCOM. That was in May of 2018. And then I was appointed in October of 2018, and now we are here today with a full strategic program ready for implementation for, on behalf of our Caribbean people. So one of the things that we have always looked at is what is our reality in the Caribbean, our Caribbean people's reality. Our reality is Caribbean people wants energy that is reliable. So that's RE. We came up with this acronym. Next reality, the next part of that reality is that they want affordable energy. The next part of that reality is that they want the energy to be available.
Dr. Jackson, excuse me, forgive me, but could you turn on your camera, please? We don't have your video feed. We can hear you very clearly, but I think you need to turn your camera on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that clear?
Excellent. Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. I didn't want to be a ghost. All right. So the other reality is environment. So we have recognized that resilience is a big part of what we are going through right now. We have, we have suffered quite a number of natural disasters. We have suffered Tomas, we have suffered through Maria, Irma, Dorian, and the list goes on. And this is annual for us. So when we speak about resilience, we speak about a lot of things with resilience, and that is something that we need to clearly define for ourselves, because it goes way beyond just hardening infrastructure. It goes about, what it really comes to is how fast and how well we recover after an event. Because when you have a Dorian sitting on an island for over 24 hours at category five, there's not much you can do. So, you know, when CEC was established, the member states saw the challenges in the Caribbean, and this has been articulated in the CARCOM energy policy. Technical challenges, as you have already articulated, isolated grid networks, small overall generating capacity, and as you guys know, it's a numbers game. So we are small, investments might not be as great to consider in small islands, and that is why pooling of resources might be very, very critical for us. Inability to meet existing and future demand, outdated equipment, and low efficiencies. Some of the socioeconomic challenge for us is high electricity tariffs. And one of the reasons for this is because of our net importation. We import most of our energy resources from overseas, and cases that we cannot manage what we are importing. We cannot manage the prices of what we're importing. So the vulnerability of rising volatile fuel prices is critical. Missed opportunities for domestic investment and jobs, energy poverty, and some of our environmental issues or challenges, local air, fresh water, ocean pollution, deforestation, degradation, and depletion of natural habitats, ecosystem and resources, and as you know, the global climate change. But the hope is not lost. So for us, the biggest challenger is sustainability. So that is our challenger for the challenges that we suffer, that we meet. So social, environment, and economics. So once we can get all of these things balanced in the right way for Caribbean people, we will get, we will get there. So CEC has actually established seven strategic programs that we believe, based on the conversations that we have had with our national focal institutions, our national focal countries through the energy, we have established these strategic programs. And just to let you know that CEC's governance structure includes member states that have ratified the agreement. Right now, we have 10 member states who have ratified their agreements, and five more will intend to ratify in very short order. We hope that this happens before ECA. We are working on that. Right now, we have, our chairman is from Dominica, you might have, might know him, Ambassador Vince Henderson. We have the Permanent Secretary from Barbados, a Permanent Secretary from Belize, Bahamas, and those are our member states. And our development partners are Unido, Ocean Development Agency, and then we have a representative from Coed. So our strategic programs that we have established for our 2019, 2023 strategic plan covers all of those areas that you are actually going to be discussing at ECA. One is knowledge management and transfer. We see the increase in knowledge, an important part in the transition of our energy sector. So we are considering, where we have started to develop a CARCOM energy knowledge hub that will provide information, data analytics, that will serve the Caribbean people in understanding the nuances of their systems going forward. And one such initiative that is part of this knowledge transfer is establishing an energy modeling and renewable energy integration laboratory that will be, that will have a virtual link to, a VPN link to national renewable energy laboratories in the USA and other labs across the world that will support the transition for the Caribbean people. Energy access, critical for us. We understand that some of our countries, Guyana, in particular Guyana, Haiti, Suriname, Belize, and in some instances Jamaica and others, where energy cannot be accessed by some of our people. So we see that there's an energy poverty situation, and to improve economies and for development, we need them to have energy. So one of the strategies is actually want to establish mini-grids in these areas, but not just a mini-grid to provide power, but the ability for the economies to grow. So we want to actually create what we call a STEM or STEAM mini-grid that will facilitate the development of our people through gender balance, through science, technology, engineering, mathematics, arts. The other strategic program is sustainable industry and businesses, looking at reducing energy intensity in our businesses, in our industry, to facilitate development and growth. One such area that we are focusing on is small and medium hotels. So we are looking at helping them with the introduction of the integrated utility service models into these countries to facilitate working behind the meter to support reducing energy from air conditioning, lighting, and so on. Next strategic program, sustainable transport. We recognize that transportation actually uses the most energy, more than electricity, in each of our member states. And just to let you know, we have actually started developing energy report cards for each of our member states. It's actually published now on our website, www.cec.org. You can actually look at the energy report card, which just gives you a snapshot of where the countries are today and what their targets are for tomorrow. Sustainable transport, we look at e-mobility as one, as one part of the transition. It also look at the demand response for transportation and then road networks, and how it can be facilitated for e-mobility. So we have actually developed a regional electric vehicle strategy for the region that we'll be sharing shortly with our member states at Coed, the next Coed, and we'll also be sharing that information at ECA. Next strategic program, finance and project support. So we are actually establishing a project preparation facility at the CEC. This will help, in particular, small and medium enterprises, to develop their markets in the renewable energy and energy efficiency space to support the development of their, of the member states, of each member state. So we are actually working on developing that to establish that by May, and we're working with the CARCOM Development Fund to support initiative, to support small and medium enterprises. The sixth strategic program is climate resilience. So one of the things that we have recognized after an event, in particular hurricane, and in more recent times since 2010, we have been having a series of earthquakes, we want to be in a position to have quick emergency response, emergency response for energy for member states. So we are looking at what type of facilities, what type of smart devices we can have through that recovery. And those three areas that we want to focus on is electricity, communication, and water. Also, to let you know that we have also been engaged by four, well, it should be five member states, to develop their integrated resource and resilience plan. We have started it for four so far. To let you know, the recipients of that integrated resource and resilience plan is Jamaica, Belize, Trinidad and Tobago, and Guyana. So we're working with two sets of consultants, and the CEC will be managing the process. And the consultants will be doing the integrated resource plan, the Caribbean Institute of Meteorology and Hydrology, which is another CARCOM institution like CEC, will be doing the vulnerability assessments, and the CEC will be taking those two information to do the integrated resource and resilience plan. And that is planned for 2020 to 2021. And the last but not least strategic program is our sustainable buildings program. Looking at our buildings, as you may have known, the region, the CARCOM, has established a regional energy efficiency building code under the International Council of Code, that is also published. You can actually go on the ICC website and see that publication, can go on our website and see that publication. And that is to develop buildings that are more efficient and that are more resilient to climate change. So these are our strategic programs facilitated through our member states. We are trying to support them in developing, and we want to work with other partners, OAS, the World Bank, the IDB, all and some that is working within the energy programs in the region. We want to make sure that we are coordinating and collaborating. We understand that we are about 17.2 million members, people in the CARCOM member states. We are also, we also recognize that it's, as I said before, it's a numbers game. We are not a large community, but we are also relevant. And we want to make sure that we can work with our partners to meet the needs of our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. I now invite member states to take the floor for comments and all questions. Brazil, you have the floor.
Obrigado, Senhor Presidente. Bom dia a todos. Presidente, eu gostaria em primeiro lugar de parabenizá-lo, ele de desejar êxito nas novas funções. É a coincidência de mandatos como o presidente do SIDI, do Conselho Permanente, constitui uma missão desafiadora. A embaixadora Rita Clavander... É a coincidência de mandatos como o presidente do CIDE, do Conselho Permanente, constitui uma missão desafiadora. A embajadora Rita Claveri passou pelo mesmo esforço. Estou certo de que o senhor vai ter o mesmo êxito que ela teve à frente dos nossos dois órgãos. Pode contar com o apoio do Brasil nessa tarefa. Por seu intermédio, queria agradecer também as apresentações feitas pelos especialistas convidados no dia de hoje. E sobretudo aproveitar esta oportunidade para agradecer ao governo da Jamaica e o Departamento de Desenvolvimento Sustentável pelos esforços envidados para a convocação da quarta reunião ministerial da Parceria das Américas para Energia e Clima, ECPA. E pelo importante trabalho de preparação que vem sendo feito com a realização de dois encontros até agora, que contaram com a participação brasileira, bem como dos diálogos temáticos. Senhor Presidente, enaltecemos o tema escolhido para esta sessão, o tema atual e oportuno. O conceito de resiliência está ligado ao imperativo de manter sistemas que garantam o fornecimento energético em bases seguras, sendo capazes de absorver rapidamente choques externos de naturezas diversas. Combinado à ideia de sustentabilidade, o tema transmite uma perfeita noção dos desafios que se apresentam aos países da região. Trata-se, em última análise, de sedimentar as bases para a chamada transição energética, preservando a segurança energética e, ao mesmo tempo, em linha com os compromissos internacionalmente assumidos em matéria de mudança do clima. Cada país, na verdade, tem características singulares em matéria de recursos energéticos disponíveis e de condicionamentos políticos e econômicos. E cada país precisará encontrar sua própria fórmula para alcançar essa combinação de resiliência e sustentabilidade. Não é por outra razão que, em certos foros internacionais, como por exemplo G20, consagrou-se a ideia, que me parece correta, de se referir no plural às diversas modalidades possíveis de transições energéticas. Como vimos nas apresentações iniciais, é fundamental o envolvimento do setor privado para que os países da região possam captar os investimentos necessários para fazer frente aos seus desafios no campo energético. Para que os agentes privados atuem em benefício da população, por outro lado, é preciso que os governos estejam presentes na definição de regras e Marcos regulatórios que sejam claros, que favoreçam a pote de investimentos na magnitude desejada. E é necessário, acima de tudo, assegurar mercados eficazes, baseados na livre concorrência, nível adequado de preços e na capacidade de fazer chegar a energia aqueles que mais necessitam. E refiro-me sobretudo àquelas áreas mais remotas e que são inicialmente menos atentas à capital privada, justamente as áreas afetadas pela chamada pobreza energética, em consonância com o objetivo de Desenvolvimento Sustentável número sete. O Brasil realizou sua transição energética antes mesmo que essa se tornasse um desafio internacional na escala que vemos hoje. No Brasil, as matrizes energética e elétrica encontros são entre as mais limpas do mundo, com respectivamente participação de quarenta e quatro e oitenta e três por cento de fontes renováveis. A predominância das hidrelétricas na geração de energia elétrica e o longo histórico brasileiro de uso do etanol combustível ilustram o pioneirismo do país na busca de soluções sustentáveis para a produção de energia. Nesse contexto, o principal desafio específico brasileiro consiste em continuar a expandir sua base energética de maneira a permitir o crescimento econômico e a geração de renda, ao mesmo tempo em que se preserve um perfil de baixo carbono da matriz. Senhor Presidente, o grande benefício do diálogo regional propiciado pelo CIDE e por uma iniciativa como a ECPA é justamente o de facilitar o intercâmbio de experiências, de forma que cada país possa encontrar com o concurso dos parceiros que escolha o melhor caminho a seguir para a consolidação de sistemas energéticos seguros e sustentáveis. Vale recordar que nossos debates devem ter presente o trabalho que é conduzido por organismos especializados em âmbito multilateral, bem como por aqueles arranjos regionais focados em energia, como é o caso da Organização Latino-Americana de Energia, Olade. Devemos sempre buscar uma estreita colaboração com essas organizações e assim evitar redundância e duplicação de forças. O Brasil está pronto para colaborar com os países interessados em conhecer nossa experiência acumulada e potencialidade no campo das energias renováveis, particularmente da bioenergia. Para concluir, o governo brasileiro atribui grande importância às discussões sobre energia e cooperação energética no hemisfério e, nesse sentido, está trabalhando internamente com vistas a definir a melhor participação possível da Ministerial de Montego Bay. Temos a expectativa de que a quarta reunião ministerial da ECPA trará importante contribuição inspirando os países membros em suas estratégias para atração de investimentos e para conformação das políticas adequadas para a superação de seus desafios no terreno da transição ou das transições energéticas. Muito obrigado, Presidente.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. Costa Rica, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Muy buenos días a usted y a todos los presidentes en la sala. Agradecemos las presentaciones del día de hoy. Y el ser esta la primera ocasión en que interviene mi delegación bajo su presidencia, quisiéramos felicitarlo, al igual que a la vicepresidencia, y expresarles la disposición de la misión permanente de Costa Rica para contribuir constructivamente en las labores del Consejo Interamericano de Desarrollo Integral. Queremos también congratular a la embajadora Claveri por el trabajo realizado en la presidencia. En cuanto al tema que nos ocupa esta mañana, quisiéramos destacar el compromiso adoptado por nuestro país mediante el Plan Nacional de Descarbonización 2018-2050. Este propone sentar las bases de la nueva economía costarricense del siglo XXI, que responda a los cambios del contexto mundial transitando hacia una economía verde, que promueva el uso y aprovechamiento sostenible de los recursos naturales, siendo congruentes con el cumplimiento de los objetivos de la Agenda 2030 y el acuerdo de París. La descarbonización y resiliencia están basados en los principios de inclusión, respeto por los derechos humanos y equidad de género, identificando rutas de transformación tecnológica para cada uno de diez ejes referidas a transporte y movilidad sostenibles, energía y construcción sostenible e industria, gestión integral de residuos, cambio y uso de suelo y soluciones basadas en la naturaleza. Para ello, se cuenta con paquetes de políticas públicas de corto, mediano y largo plazo, además de incluir ocho estrategias transversales para potenciar el cambio dentro de las que cabe señalar la estrategia de digitalización y de economía basada en el conocimiento, la reforma fiscal verde, estrategia de datos abiertos y la estrategia en educación y cultura para una Costa Rica libre de combustibles fósiles. Costa Rica ha logrado avances importantes en décadas previas, incluyendo una red eléctrica básicamente libre de emisiones y muy bajas tasas de deforestación. Mais recientemente, se ha adoptado normas clave para que facilite su implementación, como la Ley de incentivos a la movilidad eléctrica. En el marco del setagésimo cuarto periodo de sesiones de la Asamblea General de Naciones Unidas, Costa Rica recibió el Premio Campeones de la Tierra 2019, en reconocimiento en la categoría de liderazgo político por haber destacado internacionalmente con este plan de descarbonización. En el mes de octubre de 2019, Costa Rica fue sede de la PRECO 25, una sesión no solo centrada en allanar el terreno para el proceso regular de negociación, sino también en la toma de medidas concretas para la acción climática. Se desarrolló en tres áreas temáticas: ciudades y movilidad sostenibles, soluciones basadas en naturaleza y la denominada economía azul. A ello se suman dos áreas temáticas transversales: género y derechos humanos y financiamiento y movilización de recursos financieros para alcanzar las transformaciones deseadas. Sin embargo, este esfuerzo debe trascender la nacional. Es por esto que consideramos que en el marco de la OEA, a través del CIDE, se pueden articular acciones estratégicas a nivel regional y global que nos permiten potencializar los resultados y con ello cumplir nuestros compromisos con las nuevas generaciones, especialmente al obteniente a descarbonización, objetivos de la Agenda 2030 y del acuerdo de París. Costa Rica participará al más alto nivel en la cuarta reunión ministerial de la Aliança de Energía y Clima de las Américas, Resiliencia Energética y Oportunidades de Inversión, a realizarse en Montigo Bay, em Jamaica, em febrero próximo. Asimismo, esperamos recibir a las autoridades del hemisferio en la Ministerial de Desarrollo Sostenible de la cual Costa Rica será la sede. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, Ambassador. Ecuador, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias. Quero em primeiro lugar saludar a usted, senhor presidente, no exercício de la presidencia del Consejo para el desarrollo integral. Su reconocida capacidad y talentos son garantías para el éxito de los trabajos de este Consejo. Destaco también la excelente labor cumplida por su antecesor, la embajadora representante permanente de Guatemala, señora Rita Claveri. La delegación del Ecuador agradece la inscripción de este tema y reconoce el significado de las ponencias que se han hecho en el curso de esta sesión. La infraestructura energética constituye una de las bases esenciales para avanzar en la senda del crecimiento económico y del desarrollo que refleja la composición de la matriz productiva de un país, si bien, como advierten las Naciones Unidas, en la actualidad estas infraestructuras inciden directamente en las emisiones de gases de efecto invernadero. El fuerte crecimiento demográfico registrado en la región, en América Latina y el Caribe, incluido en particular en las urbes que concentrarán más de dos tercios de nuestras poblaciones, ejerce una presión enorme para satisfacer las necesidades básicas como agua, saneamiento, energía y movilidad. El desafío que se nos plantea es lograr que en este proceso de transición energética la dotación de estos servicios básicos se torne eficiente, resistente y sostenible para así configurar la economía descarbonizada con la que nos hemos comprometido en virtud del acuerdo de París. Según el último balance energético nacional que presentó el gobierno ecuatoriano en 2017, el ochenta y ocho por ciento de la energía sigue proveniendo de petróleo. Acepto de agua, sol y viento representa el seis por ciento. El reto para el Ecuador es transformar al sector de transporte, que es considerado como el mayor emisor de gases de efecto invernadero dentro del ámbito de la energía. Además, la Ley de eficiencia energética promulgada en marzo del año pasado ofrece incentivos para las personas y empresas que apuesten por sistemas más limpios en el transporte y las construcciones. En virtud de esta ley, mi país confía en incrementar sustancialmente hasta el 2035 luz suficiente de los recursos energéticos mediante la ejecución de programas y proyectos en los sectores relacionados con oferta y demanda de energía, a fin de reducir la importación de derivados de petróleo y, si posible, eliminarnos en este grupo, contribuir a la mitigación del cambio climático y crear una cultura de eficiencia energética con un ahorro aproximado de ochenta y cuatro mil millones de dólares. En concordancia con las políticas del Plan de la Agenda 2030-Ecuador y el Plan Nacional de Desarrollo Todo una Vida, se determinó que el sector eléctrico interviene directamente en el cumplimiento del objetivo cinco de los ODS. Precisamente, la energía eléctrica, que es sostenible y renovable, constituirá la base de la matriz productiva del Ecuador para convertirse en uno de los países de mayor utilización de energía verde de la región gracias a la capacidad instalada de ocho centrales hidroléticas, empezando este esfuerzo por las islas Galápagos, que pronto dejarán de utilizar energía fósiles. Quiero destacar que la primera emisión de bonos verdes en el mercado de valores ecuatoriano se realizó en diciembre de 2019 en la Bolsa de Valores de Quito. Los fondos derivados de esta transacción serán destinados a apoyar los proyectos con beneficios medibles relacionados precisamente con eficiencia energética, la energía renovable y la producción limpia. Como en otros campos de desarrollo integral de esta organización, mi delegación considera que la Alianza de Energía y Clima de las Américas está llamada a fomentar el intercambio de información, capacidades y conocimiento entre los Estados miembros con miras a fomentar el desarrollo sostenible y energético en la zona, que representa precisamente uno de los objetivos principales de la próxima cuarta reunión ministerial de energía y clima en Jamaica, sobre lo cual nos habló precisamente el delegado de ese país y que agradecemos por su presentación. Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. United States, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to join my colleagues in congratulating you for becoming the chairman, and we appreciate looking, or we look forward to working with you over the upcoming months. We also appreciate the remarks shared by our speakers this morning and would like to extend a special thank you to Mr. Griffith for joining us from the USDFC in sharing information about that tool. We commend Jamaica for hosting the fourth ECPA ministerial. The ministerial's plan inclusion of the private sector is a positive sign that governments and private industry are working together to achieve results in the energy space. The United States has provided over forty million dollars in support of ECPA since 2009. Our efforts under this initiative intend to support strengthening the region's energy independence and bolstering free market economies in the Americas to the benefit of all of our citizens. In May 2019, the U.S. Department of Energy was pleased to collaborate with the OAS through ECPA for the Advancing Caribbean Energy Resilience Workshop held in Puerto Rico. This workshop brought together over forty participants from fifteen Caribbean countries to discuss powering critical infrastructure and microgrids. Furthermore, in December 2019, the OAS hosted a launch event for a new report published by the Joint Institute for Strategic Analysis that provides an outlook of the electricity and natural gas sectors in select South American countries and assesses some of the policy options to improve power system flexibility and reliability. These collaborations are examples of the United States' support for work on energy issues through ECPA, reiterating prior points we've raised here in CIDE. The United States does not support attempts to conflate ECPA's work on energy with climate change, as the latter is within the UNFCCC's remit, not the OAS. In our view, improving resilience to natural disasters requires a balanced approach that promotes economic growth, improves energy security and protects the environment. We stress that the OAS must advance its work in a space where it holds impactful value add in relation to its mandate and available expertise, while permitting those international organizations with lead equities on climate to carry out their work. Beyond the OAS to assist in addressing resilience in areas of our hemisphere, last year, the United States committed over ten million in support of the U.S.-Caribbean resilience partnership, which brings together over ten U.S. government agencies in eighteen countries. This partnership will support technical exchanges and consultations between U.S. inter-agency resilience experts, Caribbean island countries and regional disaster management organizations such as the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency and the Regional Security System. It will also enable USAID to work with community-level organizations, host country governments, regional institutions and the private sector to strengthen local, national and regional planning and preparation for disasters. We would also like to highlight our recently launched Growth in the Americas Initiative, or in Spanish, América Crece, an innovative whole-of-government approach to support economic development by catalyzing private sector investment in energy and other infrastructure projects across Latin America and the Caribbean. América Crece works closely with governments across the region using tools including high-level diplomatic engagement, formal framework MOUs, technical assistance and exchange programs, as well as leveraging existing bilateral dialogues and regional forums to share best practices bilaterally and through regional institutions, business associations and civil society groups. América Crece also seeks to address or attract greater private sector infrastructure investments by connecting the U.S. private sector to opportunities in Latin America and the Caribbean. Thank you once again to the chair for convening this meeting, and we look forward to a successful meeting in Jamaica later this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, United States. Panama, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Me complace verlo presidir por primera vez esta sesión y le reitero el apoyo de Paramá para las tareas que desarrollará en los próximos meses. Buenos días a todos, señoras secretarias ejecutivas para el desarrollo integral, distinguidos panelistas, señoras y señores. A una semana de iniciarse la cuarta reunión de altas autoridades de la Alianza de Energía y Clima de las Américas en Montigo Bay, en primera instancia, me gustaría reconocer la responsabilidad y el trabajo con alto profesionalismo de las autoridades sectoriales de Jamaica y el personal diplomático en su capital, en Washington, que han venido realizando desde meses mostrando su liderazgo en el que han venido realizando desde meses mostrando su liderazgo en el desarrollo de fuentes de energía renovable. En este sentido, agradecemos al distinguido embajador Riyad Insanali, a la secretaria Kim Osborne y a la secretaria técnica de ECBA por facilitar este diálogo que busca recibir orientaciones de todos los aquí presentes para terminar de enriquecer los preparativos de esta reunión ministerial en la que participarán relevantes aliados regionales con una significativa presencia del sector privado. También queremos agradecer a los calificados panelistas que nos han ilustrado con sus intervenciones y aportaron provechosas experiencias, avances e información en el tema estratégico estratégico que hoy se consideró acá. Ha quedado expuesta la valiosa actuación de ECBA en la sensibilización y promoción de una infraestructura energética resiliente y sostenible en nuestros países como parte de las soluciones que nos ayudarán a la transformación de la matriz energética en su marco transicional como parte de las soluciones que nos ayudarán en ese sentido en el marco del hemisferio. Me necesito recalcar la importancia de ECBA como entorno para reunir a los gobiernos, al sector privado y a otros sectores clave fomentando la cooperación regional y la unión para abordar los retos energéticos actuales. En este sentido, la descarbonización de la matriz energética es el pilar esencial del Plan Energético Nacional 2015-2050 de nuestro país donde actualmente más de dos tercios de la generación de electricidad proviene de fuentes limpias. El gobierno del excelentísimo señor Lavrentino Cortizo Cohen ha reiterado como compromiso de país lograr una economía baja en carbono que implique la incorporación de fuentes de energía más limpias, renovables y mejorando a su vez la competitividad de nuestra economía y contribuya a la agenda de Panamá para combatir la pobreza y la desigualdad. Panamá a través de la Secretaria Nacional de Energía se incorporó al Comité Directivo de ECBA después de la tercera reunión ministerial en Chile y el momento es oportuno para distinguir la labor beneficiosa de este órgano, congratular a su secretaria técnica por el magnífico quehacer que realizan con un pequeño equipo humano, así como manifestar el interés de continuar participando en este importante mecanismo de cooperación e integración regional. Finalizo augurando los mejores éxitos en Montigo Bay y sumándome a la invitación expresada por los directivos presentes para que sus autoridades todas participen activamente en la procura de las deliberaciones y acuerdos logrados y que sigan marcando una ruta clara de esfuerzo conjuntos para abordar las necesidades y prioridades energéticas de nuestro hemisferio. Muchas gracias señor presidente.
Thank you Ambassador. El Salvador, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias señor presidente. Primeramente queremos felicitarlo por su asunción a la presidencia del CD y El Salvador tiene total confianza en su experiencia para llevar a buen puerto los asuntos a tratar por este Consejo. Asimismo hacemos extensivos nuestros agradecimientos a los panelistas por las presentaciones realizadas. El Salvador cuenta con una Política Energética Nacional 2010-2024 que posibilita la ampliación de la capacidad y cobertura mediante factores de eficiencia, optimización y ahorro a través de una nueva configuración de la matriz energética fundamentada en el desarrollo sostenible y en la adecuada integración con otros sectores claves de la vida nacional que permiten la construcción de infraestructura energética resiliente y sostenible. El Salvador bajo la actual administración del gobierno del presidente Nayib Bukele está muy comprometido con el tema energético, particularmente con la diversificación de la matriz energética. Este esfuerzo está orientado hacia la producción de energías renovables alcanzando un 55.3% la producción de energía limpia al cierre del año 2019. Actualmente se han impulsado las condiciones para que inversionistas nacionales y extranjeros implementen proyectos de energía renovable en El Salvador tal como el proyecto Capela Solar que es una de las plantas solares de mayor capacidad instalada en Centroamérica. Todos estos proyectos de energía limpia están trayendo beneficios al país como la reducción de costos permitiendo así bajar el 9.74% del precio promedio de la energía eléctrica para el primer cuatrimestre del año 2020, la generación de empleos y la conservación del medio ambiente. Señor presidente, El Salvador está muy comprometido con la Agenda 2030 para el desarrollo sostenible y con el logro de los ODS. Destacamos el objetivo número siete garantizar el acceso a una energía asequible, segura, sostenible y moderna para todos y el objetivo nueve construir infraestructura resiliente, promover la industrialización inclusiva y sostenible y fomentar la innovación. Trabajamos arduamente para progresar hacia su consecución en el 2030. Es un reto muy grande pero estamos tomando los pasos correctos de manera responsable y coordinada con otros sectores de la sociedad, empresa privada, organismos internacionales y otros. Entre algunas experiencias exitosas podemos citar la incorporación de más de 600 megawatts de energía renovable a la matriz de generación, el fortalecimiento de vínculos con organismos internacionales de desarrollo, organismos energéticos internacionales, la participación activa en actividades de desarrollo energético con organismos internacionales de energía como la Agencia Internacional de Energías Renovables, Irena, la Organización Latinoamericana de Energía, Olade y la Agencia Internacional de Energía Atómica, IAEA, la implementación de un programa regional para la generación de capacidades en geotermia para los países de América Latina y el Caribe y su respectiva transferencia de conocimientos, la creación de un plan maestro para el desarrollo de las energías renovables, la participación activa del Salvador en Sistema de Integración Centroamericana, SICA, para establecer la estrategia de desarrollo energético regional. Nuestro principal desafío es reducir la dependencia del petróleo y utilizar combustibles menos contaminantes. Se prevé que el consumo de los productos derivados del petróleo no desaparecerá del país. Sin embargo, la dependencia hacia estos se debe reducir en la generación de energía eléctrica, en la industria y en el sector transporte. Para eso debemos promover el uso de combustibles alternativos y menos contaminantes. Asimismo, se debe promover el uso de energía eléctrica y energía renovable para generar calor en actividades del sector industria y transporte tradicionalmente realizadas con derivado del petróleo, promoviendo por ejemplo vehículos eléctricos para el sector transporte. Estamos conscientes que como país hemos avanzado pero aún nos falta mucho camino que recorrer en materia energética e infraestructura resiliente. Sin embargo, bajo la visión y liderazgo del actual gobierno se continuará trabajando en esfuerzos nacionales y regionales por la diversificación de la matriz energética del país y la interconexión eléctrica de la región. Muchas gracias señor presidente.
Thank you Ambassador. Guatemala, you have the floor.
Gracias señor presidente. Guatemala agradece la convocatoria de esta primera reunión ordinaria del Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral CD. Presidía por la misión permanente de Guiana. Nuevamente señor embajador Insanali, mi delegación augura a usted y su misión el mayor de los éxitos en la conducción de los trabajos de este Consejo y reitera su apoyo para lo que usted estime oportuno. Esta reunión es oportuna teniendo presente la vulnerabilidad y riesgos latentes que enfrenta nuestro sistema energético en el ámbito económico, social y especialmente en el ambiental debido a las amenazas naturales y antrópicas y la pertinencia de tomar acciones para el fortalecimiento de la infraestructura energética en las Américas. En ese sentido, mi delegación agradece y toma nota de las valiosas exposiciones realizadas por los panelistas que nos acompañan el día de hoy. Señor presidente, Guatemala considera importante la vinculación de los principales objetivos que promueve la Alianza de Energía y Clima de las Américas, ECO, especialmente en la implementación de proyectos de energía renovable y el uso de combustibles fósiles más eficientes y menos contaminantes. Agradecemos en esa vinculación la nota conceptual preparada por la Secretaria Ejecutiva para el Desarrollo Integral. Creemos que la dinamización y crecimiento de la economía nacional no es posible sin energía asequible y generada a partir de fuentes renovables, limpias y ambientalmente sustentables. Guatemala está comprometida en garantizar el acceso a una energía asequible, segura y sostenible y moderna para todos como lo establece el ODS siete de la Agenda 2030. En ese marco ha realizado esfuerzos a través de la creación e implementación de la Política Energética 2013-2027 que tiene como objetivo contribuir al desarrollo energético sostenible en el país desde un enfoque de equidad social y de respeto al medio ambiente. Desde esa perspectiva de protección al medio ambiente, Guatemala consciente que el sector energético produce altos índices de emisiones de gases de efecto invernadero, estableció el Plan Nacional de Energía 2017-2032 que comprende tres ejes estratégicos: aprovechamiento de los recursos renovables, eficiencia y ahorro energético y reducción de emisiones de gases de efecto invernadero. Actualmente, el gobierno del presidente de Guatemala, doctor Alejandro Yamatey, impulsa el desarrollo de fuentes de energía renovable y no renovable compatibles con la conservación del medio ambiente como objetivo de uno de los pilares estratégicos economía y competitividad y prosperidad de la política general del gobierno. Cabe destacar que el cambio de Guatemala hacia un sistema energético moderno y sostenible inició con la transformación de la matriz eléctrica de fuentes térmicas a renovables y la consecuente proliferación de plantas de energía renovable en el país, especialmente las hidroeléctricas. Además de los beneficios globales que ha tenido para la economía guatemalteca, la reducción tarifaria y la estabilidad resultante de la composición de la matriz energética también ha sido relevante la instalación de plantas de energía renovable en el interior del país que ha impactado positivamente a las comunidades alrededores. De ahí la importancia de contar con recursos energéticos aptos y competitivos para contribuir con el desarrollo sostenible que se desea alcanzar en el país. Señor presidente, de cara a la celebración de la cuarta reunión ministerial de la ECBA, mi delegación agradece esta sesión que permite la preparación de nuestras delegaciones para esta actividad y considera importante que se involucren aliados regionales como el Sistema de Integración Centroamericano, SICA. Centroamérica tiene mucho que aportar al tema energético. Destacando un ejemplo exitoso de integración como el sistema de interconexión eléctrica para países de América Central, CIEPAC. Este sistema articula acciones de integración e interconexión eléctrica entre seis países de Centroamérica creando un único mercado eléctrico que atrae inversión y representa un beneficio para nuestros países. Guatemala tiene una vocación integracionista y un deseo de contribuir para una región más próspera. Reconocemos que los esfuerzos y acciones colectivas que como región impulsemos son esenciales a fin de dar cumplimiento a una agenda que promueva la cooperación, el desarrollo y la generación de negocios y oportunidades de financiamiento de proyectos energéticos para las Américas. Muchas gracias señor presidente.
Thank you very much Guatemala. Colombia, you have the floor.
Gracias señor presidente. Felicitaciones por asumir la presidencia y cuenta con Colombia para este semestre para que sea todo un éxito. De igual forma quisiera agradecer a la secretaria y a los panelistas por esta sesión. Colombia a pesar de tener una matriz de generación de energía limpia en la que alrededor del 70% de la energía es generada por energía hidroeléctrica, ha comenzado un ambicioso proceso de transformación de energía. Conscientes de que las emisiones de gases de efecto invernadero relacionadas con la energía representan más de dos tercios del total de emisiones en el mundo, el gobierno del presidente Duque no escatima esfuerzos para diversificar la matriz energética y acelerar la producción de la energía renovable no convencional. En los últimos años Colombia ha desarrollado el marco regulatorio y las condiciones claves del mercado para integrar las energías no convencionales en la red energética a través de diversos mecanismos como subastas por cargos de confibilidad, subastas a largo plazo, el establecimiento de los objetivos de un objetivo nacional del 10% de energía renovables no convencionales para 2022 en el Plan Nacional de Desarrollo, así como incentivos fiscales y no fiscales entre otros. En octubre del año pasado se realizó la segunda subasta de energía renovable no convencional en la cual se adjudicaron exitosamente contratos a nueve proyectos de energía renovables en diferentes regiones del país de los cuales seis son eólicos y tres solares. Estos nueve proyectos representan 1366 megawatts de capacidad instalada el 9.4% de la demanda regular del país. Con esta subasta junto con el desarrollo de proyectos adicionales por parte del sector privado, Colombia pasará de 50 megawatts de capacidad instalada en energía renovables no convencionales para... perdón, 50 megawatts a 2500 megawatts de capacidad instalada en energía renovables no convencionales para 2022 reduciendo las emisiones en más de nueve millones de toneladas de CO2. Asimismo, el Ministerio de Energía lanzó el Plan Integral de Gestión del Cambio Climático para los sectores de energía y minería, primero en América Latina y primero en el país como un compromiso del sector en el que se estableció una reducción de más o menos 20% del CO2 proyectado en emisiones para 2030 de estos sectores. Para lograr dicho objetivo, el plan se estructura en tres componentes transversales: mitigación, adaptación y gobernanza. La energía renovable, la eficiencia energética y los controles de emisión co-positivas son elementos claves para alcanzar estos objetivos. Así Colombia cree firmemente que estas iniciativas alentarán el trabajo de la región para tener una energía más limpia e invitamos a toda la región a unirse a estos ambiciosos pero alcanzables objetivos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much Colombia. San Kitzan Neves, you have the floor.
Thank you Mr. Chair and good morning to all. The delegation of San Kitzan Neves extends appreciation to the panel for the very interesting and insightful presentations. Energy security is critical for our hemisphere and it was useful to learn of the many investment programs and opportunities that are available to and occurring in our region. Dr. Jackson clearly captured the challenges the Caribbean region faces and the strategies that Cree has in place to deliver energy security. The strategies presented appear to be solution-driven and San Kitzan Neves looks forward to working with Cree and the other institutions represented as we diversify our energy mix and provide reliable and affordable energy to our people. San Kitzan Neves remains committed to engaging in projects and programs that reduce our carbon footprint and of course provide sustainable energy to our citizens. We congratulate the Chair of CD for bringing this critical subject to the OAS agenda and on assuming the role as Chair. We also applaud the steady and ECBA team for its invaluable work in advancing sustainable development and energy and anticipate a very successful ECBA meeting in Jamaica. Thank you.
Thank you San Kitzan Neves. Mexico, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias señor presidente. Primero que nada queremos felicitarlo por tomar...
Primero que nada, queremos felicitarlo por tomar posesión como presidencia del CDI y expresamos la disposición de México para colaborar en el éxito de sus labores, así como destacar el trabajo de la embajadora Rita Claveri y la delegación de Guatemala el semestre anterior. Señor presidente, nos quedan diez años para que finalice el plazo que los países nos dimos para reducir o erradicar los obstáculos al desarrollo incluido el acceso equitativo, sostenible, inclusivo y resiliente a la energía. En ese sentido, el gobierno del presidente Andrés Manuel López Obrador ha tenido como uno de sus objetivos alcanzar la seguridad energética y eso incluye también, en el caso de mi país, el acceso de las comunidades indígenas a la energía. Mi delegación sostiene que las opciones multilaterales, el intercambio de buenas prácticas y de conocimientos son claves para alcanzar estos objetivos. Coincidimos en la importancia de trabajar juntos en la búsqueda de soluciones a nuestros retos energéticos comunes y vemos a ECPA como una plataforma sumamente relevante a tal efecto. Queremos resaltar la relevancia que tiene el hecho de que sea un país del Caribe, en este caso Jamaica, y del Caribe anglofono en particular, quien expide la próxima ministerial del sector. Felicitamos a Jamaica y esperamos interesados el éxito de la reunión que será el éxito de todos. Muchísimas gracias.
...of a 15.84 kilowatts at the National Parks Commission. A national grid code has been developed and more attention is being focused on distributed generation and establishing the commercial and technical frameworks for grid-connected renewable energy systems and streamline the procedures for feeding mechanisms. Also, the government of Guyana has embarked on a green public sector program in keeping with a presidential charge for the public sector to lead the way in transitioning towards greater renewable energy use. During 2015 to 2018, a rooftop solar PV system were installed at over 200 government buildings, totaling 3.86 megawatts, and an additional 1.19 megawatts will be installed at Eta Billings, outfitted with rooftop solar PV systems by the end of 2019, which was last year, resulting in a total combined installed capacity of over 5 megawatts. Furthermore, as part of the energy efficiency component of this program, over 26,400 LED lights and 4,500 occupancy sensors were installed by the end of 2018. And following the approval of the Regional Energy Efficiency Building Code in 2018, the Guyanian National Bureau of Standards will spearhead the adoption of the Regional Energy Efficiency Building Code as a national standard. The government of Guyana has also created fiscal incentives for developers such as value-added tax and excise duty exemptions for selective renewable energy equipment, solar appliances, solar water heaters, solar cookstoves, energy-efficient lighting and cooperation tax holidays for importers of items for wind and solar energy investments. Also, several incentives have also been instituted to promote energy efficiency in the transport sector, including tax exemption and tax reductions of newer vehicles with smaller energies tax reductions for hybrids and electric vehicles, tax exemptions for installation of electric vehicle charging stations and for transport biofuels. Additionally, with the establishment of the country's first bioethanol demonstration plant at the Albion Estate in Region 6, the E10 formulation, a blend of 90% and 10% ethanol, offers an opportunity for new commercial-scale enterprises that would transform the transport sector and reduce gasoline consumption. The government plans to support the development of industrial-scale ethanol production to enable alternative transportation fuels to gasoline. There are also options to consider for promoting the production of crops for commercial-level biodiesel production. Furthermore, Guyana will continue to examine opportunities for power generation options from rice husk and wood waste and high-pressure gas-fueled cogeneration to augment power generation capacity where feasible. The development of hydroelectricity promises a more reliable, cost-effective and renewable form of energy. We would like to see our vast hydropower potential, over 7,000 megawatts harnessed and various scales of projects commissioned from micro and macro bioelectric plants for Hinterland electrification to medium-sized projects for the national grid to larger-scale hydropower projects for the export of electricity. An Energy Implementation Working Group, which consists of representatives from government agencies, utilities and supporting energy and development partners, was established to facilitate the overall planning, development, commissioning and operation of individual projects within a programmatic framework. In addition, a public-private partnership policy framework was developed in 2018 for infrastructural projects including hydropower plants and energy farms. Future energy efficiency plans include continuing to conduct energy audits, developing technology and regulations for energy-efficient buildings, encouraging energy-conscious procurement within the public sector, research and developing energy efficiency standards and labeling schemes and promoting energy management standards. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Guyana. I thank all the delegations for their interventions. And once again, I thank our distinguished panel of experts for their contributions to our deliberations. I now wish to propose that CDI take note of the presentations made by the specially invited guests as well as those of delegations and instruct CDI to continue its efforts to ensure the success of ECPA and to continue to support efforts by member states to advance private sector engagement in energy infrastructure development, including through the exchange of best practices that support public-private partnerships for energy security and independence. If there are no objections, it is so decided. I'm now pleased to recognize Mrs. Kim Osborn, Executive Secretary for Integral Development, to provide us with some remarks to close this particular session. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, distinguished ambassadors and delegates. Good afternoon, or good morning, I think it's still morning. Chair, let me take this opportunity to welcome you to this august body. I am delighted to have the opportunity to work with you and we look forward to a productive six months of CDI, sorry. I join with you and delegations in expressing my appreciation to our guest panelists and to delegations for providing us with such rich and varied perspectives on the critical importance of building resilient energy infrastructure in OAS member states. The interventions we heard today make clear that building resilient energy infrastructure is not a matter of debate. It is an absolute imperative for sustainable development for countries large and small, rich and poor. The economic benefits that can be derived from resilient energy include the ability of countries to conserve foreign exchange reserves and service debt, increased investment, as well as the ability of firms, especially micro, small and medium enterprises, to compete internationally. The social and environmental benefits are no less significant. They include a more resilient energy, resilient citizenry through less energy poverty and unemployment, increased access to education and information and stronger business continuity during and after disasters. Chair, the contributions of the ECPA to our member states are many. I will however focus on contributions made in 2019. In 2019, CDI through the ECPA continued to assist member states to ensure a transition to clean and resilient energy that strengthens energy security. To this end, we undertook the following: A Caribbean energy knowledge hub was, has been developed in collaboration with the World Bank Caricom, the Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency Partnership and the Clean Energy Solutions Center. The portal will facilitate partner coordination, provide guidance to prospective energy investors and serve as a repository of Caribbean energy policies and sustainable energy best practices and applied knowledge. All member states are being helped to develop harmonized energy efficiency standards and regulations through the metrology project funded by the U.S. Department of State. Costa Rica shared its knowledge and experience in geothermal wind and solar energy infrastructure planning and management with renewable energy directors of the Bahamas, Belize, the Dominican Republic, Guyana, Honduras, Jamaica, Trinidad and Tobago and the United States for a technical exchange mission that was facilitated by the ECPA. Chile and St. Lucia, with the support of the OAS, the Inter-American Development Bank and the Inter-American Dialogue led three capacity-building seminars and workshops for officials engaged in developing and implementing plans for the deployment of electric mobility. ECPA supported Costa Rica in hosting a side event during the pre-COP25 for decision-makers, physical planners and transport experts to foster agreement on strategies for the advancement of sustainable transport. Ministerial dialogues were convened by Costa Rica and Jamaica in preparation for the fourth Energy and Climate Partnership of the Americas Ministerial to be held in Montego Bay, Jamaica on February 27th through 28th, to identify regional priorities in energy and receive input from member states and regional partners on the experiences, policy options and technologies to ignite sustainable solutions in the Americas on matters such as electric mobility, gender and energy, resilience and natural gas. ECPA delivered technical assistance to energy directors in 22 countries in the Americas through workshops, exchange missions and targeted expert advice to ensure, to encourage the use of reliable scientific and empirical data in energy management, renewable energy development and air quality monitoring. We consolidated a network of experts for engagement in regular exchange of information and data on energy and environmental policies. ECPA developed in collaboration with the Central American Integration System, SICA, recommendations to strengthen energy efficiency regulations at the national level in seven member states and supported a unified system of Central American technical regulations on energy efficiency, the RTCE, for household appliances and equipment at the sub-regional level. These activities, I should say these capacity-building activities speak eloquently about the vital role that the ECPA has played in helping OAS member states to build resilient energy systems. I should also indicate that in terms of its governance, the ECPA is a powerful testament to the value of multilateral cooperation. Several member states participate in monthly meetings of the ECPA steering committee where decisions are made on ECPA programming and activities. It is through this committee that the structure of all ECPA ministerials are discussed and agreed. I take this opportunity to commend the ECPA Technical Secretariat Director Springer, the secretary of the program led by Juan Cruz Montechelli within the Department of Sustainable Development for its able stewardship of the ECPA program. And I thank in particular the U.S. Department of State through its mission to the OAS for the longstanding support for the ECPA. The sound planning that has gone into the fourth ECPA ministerial makes us confident that solid outcomes will be achieved in Jamaica and that a fresh agenda will emerge to take resilient energy infrastructure planning and implementation to the next level. CDI reiterates its commitment: "We remain committed to working with member states in advancing cooperation geared towards building institutional, human and technical capacity to face the development challenges of our time." And we look forward to continue working with all member states throughout this year. I look forward to sharing the CDI 2019 report with you and our 2020 work plan going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Executive Secretary, and I thank you in particular for recognizing those who are particularly deserving of our appreciation. Distinguished colleagues, I now turn to item four on the agenda, the sixth Inter-American Meeting of Ministers and High Authorities of Science and Technology. And I invite the distinguished representative of Jamaica to speak to this item as the meeting will take place in Jamaica later this year. Mr. Williams, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the floor once again. As delegations would have already been aware, Jamaica will also host the sixth Inter-American Meeting of Ministers and High Authorities of Science and Technology in November 2020, also in Montego Bay. Delegations will also recall that at the ninth regular meeting of the Inter-American Committee on Science and Technology, COMC, held the last December at OAS headquarters, Jamaica had put forward for consideration a draft proposal for the theme and guidelines for the sixth Inter-American Meeting of Ministers and High Authorities of Science and Technology. At that meeting, the drafted document was discussed and amendments proposed by several delegations. These amendments were subsequently incorporated into the documents and discussed at last week's informal meeting. Today, we have before us the revised proposal for the theme and guidelines. The document sets out in enhanced clarity and details the following: The theme: Harnessing the Power El documento establece con mayor claridad y detalles lo siguiente: el tema, "La potencia de la ciencia y tecnología transformadoras para impulsar nuestras comunidades hacia adelante". También incluye los subtemas, objetivos clave, las fechas propuestas y la ubicación de la reunión, así como el formato, que, por supuesto, incluirá plenarias, paneles, presentaciones de keynote y roundtables. El documento se presentará aquí para más análisis y feedback por las delegaciones. Agradezco, señor presidente.
Agradezco al representante distinguido de Jamaica por la información compartida en la reunión ministerial programada para llevar a cabo el 10 al 11 de noviembre de 2020 en Montego Bay, Jamaica. También aprecio que la presentación formal del tema y las guías propuestas de la reunión ministerial contenga el documento CD/Comsit/Doc/3/10 revision 1. El documento preparado durante la séptima reunión regular del Comité interamericano de ciencia y tecnología, llevada a cabo en diciembre de 2019, se ha presentado. Ahora abro el plazo a las delegaciones que quieran comentar sobre el tema y las guías No hay solicitudes para el plazo. Quiero proponer que el CD tome nota de la presentación hecha por la delegación de Jamaica como presidente de COMSIT y como invitada de la sexta reunión interamericana de ministros y altas autoridades de la ciencia y tecnología. Tome nota de la fecha y el anfitrión propuesto de dicha reunión, que es el 10 y 11 de noviembre de 2020 en Montego Bay, Jamaica. Tome nota de el tema y las guías propuestas de la sexta RMC, aprobada por la séptima RMC en diciembre 12 de 2019. Ah, Brasil, perdón. Tienes el plazo.
Gracias, presidente. Pasaré mi palabra y agradecer a la delegación de Jamaica por presentar el documento. Brasil, no hay reparos a hacer a su propuesta de encaminamiento. Solo me pregunto, mi entendimiento es que la propuesta estará abierta para comentarios de los países. Me pregunto si será articulado un plazo para el recepción de estos comentarios para una posterior aprobación formal del documento. Gracias, presidente.
Gracias por la pregunta. Entiendo que hay un plazo de lunes, 24 de febrero de 2020, para que las delegaciones suministraran al secretariado sus comentarios y observaciones para enriquecer la propuesta sobre el tema y subtemas de la reunión ministerial. Espero que sea aceptable. Si no hay otras solicitudes para el plazo, entonces ese último punto se incorporaría a las propuestas de approval de la CD, que es acordar un plazo de lunes, 24 de febrero de 2020, para que las delegaciones suministraran al secretariado cualquier comentario o observación que pueda enriquecer la propuesta sobre temas y subtemas de la reunión ministerial. Además, decidir que el tema y subtemas para la sexta reunión americana de ministros y altas autoridades de la ciencia y tecnología se adoptará en la próxima reunión regular programada para el 25 de febrero de 2020. Si no hay objeciones, es así decidido. El siguiente artículo de la agenda es otro asunto. Le doy el plazo a las delegaciones que quieran traer cualquier otra cuestión a la atención del consejo. No hay otras cuestiones a considerar, la reunión está adjunta. Muchas gracias.
Bueno. Muy eficiente.